Okay, we will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, February 16th, 2015. I'd ask that you all please rise for a brief invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as the City Council meets in regular session, we are ever mindful of the challenges and the dangers that are constantly confronting us and our citizens. That being said, this afternoon, the Batavia Fire Department responded to what I would describe as a very serious incident near the intersection of South Batavia Avenue and Carlisle Road. And through the perseverance and training and ingenuity of our fire department, I think we were able to keep what was brewing to be a major fire under somewhat controlled circumstances, and then we were very successful in preventing the fire from spreading to neighboring properties, which was about to happen when they find we were able to get water on the fire after struggling to get up an ice-packed driveway of several hundred feet off the road. So we are thankful for the talents and the blessings that were showered upon us this afternoon in this very challenging situation, and we are ever mindful, as this example, of service by our community, by our personnel and our employees, how blessed as a community we are in all aspects of city government to have highly trained and professional people ready to rise to the occasion and take necessary steps of support in moments of great trouble. As always tonight, we want to specifically remember those from our community who are serving on foreign soils in defense of our liberties, and we just ask that a special blessing be showered upon each and every one of those men and women in their vital missions on behalf of the liberty of the United States of America. As always, we ask for guidance and blessing and direction as we act upon the various items of business before us, knowing that each and every one of us is here to do in our own minds the very best job that we can on behalf of the citizens of Batavia. We ask for all these blessings, amen. Alderman Brown, you want to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask the City Clerk to please call the roll.
Brown?
Here.
Alderman Clark is absent. ATAC?
Here.
Stark?
Here.
Chantet?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Fisher?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Homan?
Here.
Sam?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
McFadden?
Here.
So let the record reflect that we have 12 present, one absent, and one seat vacant. So we have the necessary quorum to conduct business. Moving then to item number four, items to be removed, added, or changed on tonight's agenda. Alderman Stark, do you have anything this evening?
Yes, I do, Your Honor, that we remove the executive session, item number 13.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope. I move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Second. Moved by Alderman Stark, second by Alderman McFadden for the approval of the agenda as amended. Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Stark?
Hi.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Motion approved. Twelve yes, no, no's, one absent. Okay, moving then to item number five, which is presentation of tonight's consent agenda. Alderman Stark, please.
Okay. Tonight's consent agenda reads as follows: that we accept and place on file the committee of the home minutes for November 13th, 2014, and January 6th and 20th, 2015, the January 2015 building report, the historic preservation commission minutes for January 26, 2015, the plant commission minutes for November 19th, 2014, and the following approvals: February 13th, 2015 payroll in the amount of $774,682.12, the accounts payable register in the amount of $743,538.20, the City Council minutes for January 20th, 2015, Resolution 15-21R, awarding 2015 electric tree trimming contract to Asphalent Tree Expert Company for the amount not to exceed $150,000, Resolution 15-18-R, authorizing a budget amendment for the funding of Deer Path Road Bridge right-of-way acquisition, Resolution 15-19-R, authorizing execution of the local agency agreement amendment number one for federal participation for the Deer Path Road Bridge right-of-way acquisition with Illinois Department of Transportation, Resolution 15-20-R, authorizing execution of a master services agreement with GeWalt Hamilton for professional engineering services, Resolution 15-23-R, stormwater easement at 1061 North Redan Road, Ordinance 1506 declaring the necessity of use and requesting dedication of land from the Batavia Park District for Houston Street, Resolution 15-6-R, accepting a plat dedicating a portion of Houston Street, Resolution 15-24-R, authorizing Task Order One with GeWalt Hamilton for Mahoney Creek at Wilson Street Stream Bank Improvements, Resolution 15-25-R, authorizing Task Order Number Two with GeWalt Hamilton for stream bank improvements for Mahoney Creek at Woodland Hills Park between Woodland Hills Road and Meadow Road. I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Moved by Alderman Stark, second by Alderman Chantet for the approval of the consent agenda as amended. Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Stark?
Hi.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Motion for the approval of the consent agenda is approved. Twelve yes, no, no's, one absent. Okay, moving to item number six, matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Do we have anybody in the audience that wishes to address this evening? Yvonne, if you'd come up and use the mic, please.
Yvonne Dunwitty, 1156 Pine Street in Batavia. First of all, I want to reiterate that I'm not opposed to taxes and rules. Both are necessary for order and provision of services. What I am opposed to is wasteful spending and nonjudicious use of taxpayer dollars. In that light, the dog and pony show put on by Mr. David Hyder, Vice President of Municipal and Financial Services Group, MFG, was designed to get your heads nodding in the affirmative and to put money in Municipal and Financial Services Group's pocket. What it wasn't designed to do was answer critical questions regarding necessity, what was already done, and what the costs are or were. Their presentation had the desired effect when no questions were asked, and the only question raised by Alderman Stark was, who's going to pay for this? Well, the answer, Ms. Stark, is always the taxpayer. Money doesn't fall from the sky, and municipalities and other forms of government are believed to have deep pockets, so they are easy marks for these study providers. I'm not going to take up all your time to give you an in-depth analysis of their study at this point, but I'm going to feed you bits and pieces of questions you should be asking and getting answered before you agree to another study or to proceed with any work that will cost the taxpayers and ratepayers even more money than we don't have. First, what was the purpose of the study? I know what I read in the RFQs, and you know RFQ stands for something else, too, and the answers for those who replied. What I am asking is, do you, the City Council members, understand the need for the study, and do you understand the results? When the study is done, did it answer all the questions and give you enough information to make a valid, informed decision? Did you follow through with the recommendations from the study and get monthly updates from the city administrator and/or department heads as to what parts of the study, if any, were implemented, at what cost, and if nothing was done, why wasn't it done? If you don't intend to implement the study recommendations, what is the sense in doing the study in the first place? I spent a lot of time studying the studies, both the Trotter Study and the MFG Study, and I'm not finished yet. There are way too many holes to fill before any thought to starting another stormwater utility or raising water and sewer rates can be given. We already have a wastewater and water utility, each with their own initial service fees, and the stormwater utility would constitute at least a partial duplication of service costs until all the combined sewers are separated. I stated last week at the COW meeting that we didn't even have answers to what parts of the Trotter Study had been implemented, and I see massive duplications of effort in the MFG Study with no results. Mr. McGrath told me outside the City Council meeting as we were leaving last week that absolutely nothing was done with the Trotter Study. So in my opinion, the cost of that study was a colossal waste of taxpayer dollars, and now you've allowed duplication of effort in portions of the MFG Study, and other than raising rates, what part of the study will be implemented? Remember, the Trotter Study was completed in 2008, and in the executive summary of the Trotter Study, in-depth rate information was provided. So far, here's what's missing from both the Trotter Study and the MFG Study. One, what is the current failure rate of the current infrastructure, pipes, production, and so on? Is the failure so significant and/or widespread that another study was required? When there is a failure of a water or sewer pipe, what evaluation has been done to determine the cause of the failure, how much of the lines were replaced, what kinds of records are kept, map, addresses, et cetera, to determine where the failures occurred, why they occurred, how many manors required to fix or repair or replace the failures, equipment costs and material costs? I was looking at the 2015 budget to determine exactly what part of our water budget is for maintenance, and there was actually no real maintenance mentioned in the budget. See page 129, account 6340, 6355, 63...60, 6445. There is a $1.1 million budgeted for water improvements, sans engineering fees. What part of that budget was actually used to repair and replace lines? Was there any surplus in the budget, and what was done with the surplus? Was it transferred to another enterprise fund or the general fund? We had $3.66 million in surplus and reserves for the water fund and nearly $1 million in bond payments. $733,000 is going to be taken from surplus and reserves to fund $1.1 million in water main replacements, plus $115,000 in engineering fees to accomplish the work. So without an actual budget for maintenance and repairs, we're simply throwing money into surplus and reserves and costing the citizens of Batavia ever increasing fees and money without actually knowing the necessity for it. And without knowing how much of the pipes were already replaced, are we budgeting and raising fees for work that was already accomplished? The wastewater budget shows surplus and reserves of $1.4 million, and the budget shows an expansion/rehab of wastewater treatment plant and new software purchases, which indicates to me that the rates and charges in the MFG Study are going to be implemented. Wastewater treatment plant expansions were put on hold a couple of years ago, but I only see increases in the budgets over the years with the WWTP listed again. So I would encourage the council to demand a review of what was actually done for wastewater improvements or repairs and where the money is actually going. The useful life of materials was emphasized constantly in the MFG Study, but what wasn't emphasized was how much of the buried infrastructure has actually been replaced. Would the council's intention be to dig up all these water and sewer lines and replace the entire length immediately or on approval of the loans? Or would it be more prudent to wait until there was a significant failure in sections of the lines to dig those sections up and replace them? Mr. Hyder indicated that some of the older materials used in the lines actually outlasted newer materials. The city should already have reserves for catastrophic failures, and I wouldn't expect 100% or even 10% of the lines to need immediate replacement. Therefore, would that money just languish in our city coffers, or would it be transferred to other accounts so that continuous increases, such as those for electricity, would be required? If the city has a maintenance schedule, wouldn't you already know what it costs to repair, replace, and/or maintain the infrastructure? Where is the report from the city administrator and/or the department heads to the City Council about what repairs, replacement, and/or maintenance was done, where it was done, and how much it cost? This should be done monthly. If money is taken from ratepayers and taxpayers to fund repairs and maintenance, and that money is shifted from that fund to some other fund, it's called misappropriation of funds, and in the strictest legal sense, it is embezzlement from the ratepayers and taxpayers. How can the ratepayers and taxpayers be assured that the money we are giving you is accurately accounted for and spent for the intended purpose without in-depth monthly progress and expense reports? What has the city been doing with the maintenance funds all these years? We, the ratepayers and taxpayers, certainly have been paying for the increases, but what have we seen in increase in services and maintenance? I saw a lot of conjecture in the study and a lot of fudging numbers for future years, and yes, it looks impressive and urgent, but my question is, how much of this is urgent? How much of it will be done, and over what period of time? And if it ain't broke, why fix it? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. McGrath?
Just a comment, because there's so many inaccuracies that Yvonne talked about, I just can't let some of them go, especially when somebody's charging something as serious as embezzlement by, you know, the city. Number one, and I think she's very well aware, because she's come in and asked for our information numerous times, and we've provided it at all times, none of the money, none of the money that is paid into a utility and ends up in the reserves is placed in another fund. We are audited by outside auditors every year, and it's very clear, and I think she knows that as well. I don't know why that's brought up. The Trotter Study was done just before the recession was done. That was the major reason why the Trotter, the improvements recommended by the Trotter did not go on, it was because of the recession. I think we all have to remember, too, that the reason you do a study is to get knowledge. And there are many times you do a study about things you don't realize, and the successful way to deal with that is by not going forward on something and spending money. And that's precisely what happened with Trotter. The result of the Trotter Study was a lengthy conversation by this council about its future growth boundaries, its ability to deal with the requested annexation by parts of Musart, and the study's been of great value to us in many small ways, not so small ways. We have, the study is not, excuse me, the construction recommendations did not go forward any major way, but in between times, since it did not go forward, we have budgeted for, and it has been explained to you, that we have done some emergency repairs down in the wastewater treatment plant because of waiting. Our bills and the checks we pay are on the website every month. There's a report from the Finance Department every month as to what we do, and one does not wait until you have all your sewer and water pipes breaking before you start digging into the ground, disrupting people's lives, break up their neighborhoods, and fix them. What you do is you start looking from the knowledge of the wastewater and the water people who've learned what the ground conditions are in different parts of the city, their knowledge of when pipes were put in, their knowledge of the methods and manners in which they were put in in the past, plus the occurrence of main breaks in those areas, and that's how they make their decision to when to go in and replace pipes. I think it was really clear last week, when the study was given, that there is no way that we have enough money, even with these increases, to be keeping up with any kind of reasonable replacement schedule for wastewater and water. The fact is that we're lucky that many of the lines last much longer than their projected life, so we can keep up in that way. And I think that was all stated last week at the meeting, and I'd be glad to go further in another meeting and certainly can have any of the utility superintendents be here and answer any questions or give you any documentation you'd like. Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience? Okay, moving then to item number seven. We're very honored this evening to have Doug Sullivan. Doug is the Director of Marketing for Pace Bus, the whole system. He is a Batavia resident, and also he is the President of the Batavia Library Board, and they're coming down to visit us tomorrow night, so Doug's going to be here two nights in a row. But Doug is here to tell us about the new Pace Call and Ride Bus that's been added to Batavia, and most of you, I think, have seen it. It's a very bright blue bus, and it's running around town, and we've had a lot of questions about it. So I asked Doug if he would come down and put on a hands-on presentation with us about how the bus works and where it goes and what we're doing with it and what we hope to do with it in the future.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Shulkey. Glad to be with the Batavia City Council this evening to talk about yet another call-and-ride that Pace has now implemented. This one here in Batavia began in October. So I'd just like to tell you very briefly what the call-and-ride service is. We have, I think, now six or seven of these operating in various geographic zones throughout our Chicago metro area. You can see the zone, everyone should have a handout in front of them about this service. On the back of this handout, it has a map here that outlines the boundaries that this service operates within. So you may have known that for perhaps 10, 15, 20 years or more, Batavia has had a dial-a-ride program that is partially subsidized by the township that takes, I believe it's seniors and people with disabilities, on a demand-response basis. They call up, reserve a ride, usually a day in advance, and then that service picks them up and takes them to their destination, I think, just within the township zone. This call-and-ride is a little bit different in that you can get a ride, it's open to the general public, and you can get a ride with only an hour's notice. So the way this works is the bus driver has a cellphone. He or she can take reservations while the, you know, during the course of the day, of course, maintaining safe operations by pulling over to schedule trips, but the driver organizes the manifest, if you will, and organizes these pickups and drop-offs based on the most convenient schedule. So this particular service was designed initially to assist employees at Fermilab to get from the Geneva train station to their place of work. But of course, it's open to the general public, and you can see the zone incorporates a number of apartment complexes, the retail corridor on Randall Road, senior centers like the Homestead and Heritage Woods. So a lot of options for people of all ages and destinations. The service costs $1.75, so affordable for just about everybody, and that's the same price as the regular Pace Bus that travels up and down the street on a fixed schedule. The ridership on this service has been growing very well. Of course, any new public transit service takes a while to generate demand and generate awareness, but that ridership is certainly growing each month since we've kicked it off, so that's definitely good news. We at Pace have also been in touch with Mayor Shulkey about the fact that perhaps this zone needs to be expanded further to the southeast to incorporate some of the older stock housing in that kind of near-southeast quadrant of the city. So we are continuing to work on that. I showed you an image of the bus. This kind of acts as a moving billboard as it travels around town and picks people up. We have just one of these vehicles that's in operation, and this service operates from 6:30 a.m. to almost 7:00 p.m. each weekday. So those are some basics about this new service, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Anybody have any questions? Alderman Brown?
Yeah, so this area that you got outlined here, this is the area that it services, but you'll pick up anybody in that area?
Right.
They'll pick you up right at the front of your house?
Right, right. Including both sides of Randall Road there, but yeah, you can get picked up and dropped off anywhere within the zone. This also connects at the Geneva train station with an adjoining call-and-ride service that covers much of Geneva and St. Charles, so you can even extend that reach even further by transferring to that other service, so gives people options throughout the tri-cities.
And Doug, as I understand this, when this bus goes every morning to the Geneva train station?
That's right, yes. I should have explained that a little better.
Why don't you explain a little bit about that?
Yes, so you can see on the back where this map is, this service is sort of a hybrid, and a hybrid meaning it's a mix between demand response and a scheduled bus service. So demand response meaning that I call and make a reservation and I get picked up. So the service does that function, but it also does these scheduled connections. You can see here, it picks up at the Geneva train station at 6:50 a.m. and 7:38 a.m. and 8:52, and makes those scheduled trips to Fermilab. So for those people who want to board at the Geneva train station at those times, they don't need a reservation, but everyone else throughout the other times of day in other locations does need to call to make that reservation. So those people who are, you know, traveling every day, every morning to Fermilab probably catch that 7:38 or that 8:52 a.m. trip, and they don't need a reservation. They can just get on and pay and be on their way to Fermilab.
And as I understand it, you and your staff are out trying to kind of expand this service to specifically other industries in Batavia that may have employees that are taking the train out from Geneva, and then we would put them on that same bus that's going to Fermilab and pick them up or drop them off at various industrial or business locations?
Right. Yeah, that's one thing that we always try to work on is, you know, find other major generators within this zone. If there is sufficient demand for that, we can add them to a fixed schedule or just educate their employees about the fact that it exists and that it's an option for them, you know, on an on-demand basis. But there's certainly capacity available here to, you know, to add more bodies to the trips.
And I'm correct in saying this, that we are experiencing some activity from Fermilab that is daily using this bus now?
Yes. So the planner who designed this service was talking to me in preparation for tonight, and Fermilab is definitely the most popular destination for this service so far. So that's where it is getting the most usage. You know, obviously, that fixed schedule has a lot to do with that, but yeah, there's certainly opportunities for others like that. Yes, sir.
I hate to, I think this is just such a great program, I want to make sure everybody that's watching on TV understands how it works, so I need to understand, too. So other than your specific times that you pick up at the train station and go to Fermilab, if I live, say, at the Batavia Apartments or any other place in town and wanted to be picked up at 10 o'clock to go to Randall Road to do my shopping, you just pick up the phone, call them and say, could you pick me up at such-and-such address at 10 o'clock, and they do that?
Right. Yeah, the driver may, you know, attempt to negotiate, if you will, you know, an amended pickup time based on what he or she can do that day. You know, every day's a little bit different with a service like this, but yeah, if it, you know, maybe you say, I'd like to get picked up at 10 o'clock, and he says, well, I've got another one at 10, I can get you at 10 after 10 or something like that, but so, right, that's how that works. You would call this number that's here, that, you know, as I said, that's the bus driver's cellphone, and then you can work out your pickup time from there.
That's great. And the fare is $1.75 one way, is that?
Right.
So if you, $1.75 one way, and if you want to go through Geneva into St. Charles, you have to get a transfer at the Batavia-Geneva border, so to speak?
Right.
Do you just get a transfer, or do you have to pay another $1.75?
I believe if you are paying with your Ventra card, which is the smart card that Pace and CTA use for, you know, for our public transit fare payment, if you have that card, you pay only the 25-cent transfer price. If you had paid cash, you'd have to pay another $1.75 in cash to board the next, the other vehicle.
Where do people get that card?
You can get it online, you can get it at vending machines, you can get it at places like Jewel. The Jewel right here in Batavia sells it.
So, every dollar counts, and so they need to know where to get these cards and what they're going to do.
Yes. Absolutely. I should also mention that senior citizens over sixty-five years of age ride for half-price as well, so even cheaper for some segment of the community.
One last thing. I noticed on the picture, a wheelchair accessible. Is a bicycle accessible?
That's a good question. There is no bicycle rack on this vehicle, and I don't think you're allowed to take a bicycle inside this bus, so I'm pretty sure that answer is no. But the Pace fixed route vehicles, like the one on Randall Road and the one on Route 31, do have a bicycle rack.
One thing I would call your attention on this little map that we have in the back, this was all designed with the, the planners came out and talked to myself and some of the staff about, you know, where were the Batavia destination points or riderships. So, we specifically targeted areas like Batavia Apartments, Heritage Woods, River Rain, the Batavia Library, Homestead, Green Meadows, Laurelland Apartments. We tried to get all those areas where we think the highest percentage of riders would be of folks. And I think that has kind of proven out. We are getting riderships out of most of those different locations, but we obviously initially included them in. And then I have suggested to them that on the east side, we need to drop this thing down further, farther south, because we've got a lot of older residents in a lot of the neighborhoods, you know, from all the way down to Pine Street and maybe a little even beyond that, that probably could use this thing. And so, I think right now, if you call us, we don't deny you, I don't think, if we got the time to go down there and pick you up, do we? I don't think we're not really holding to this boundary.
Yes. Yes, the boundary is fixed. The driver is told not to go outside that boundary, yes. That is happening. I don't know about any denials, I mean, I haven't heard about any actual denials if anyone has requested that.
I've talked to some folks that got picked up by it, and they lived south of Wilson on the east side, and the driver dropped them down there. Thank goodness, I appreciate his open-mindedness on that whole thing.
Okay. All right. Well, I won't tell my boss, then.
Alderman Etch.
When are the subscription trips? It says, "Subscription trips may be available." Is that like a regular, ongoing trip, like every Thursday afternoon?
Right. Yes, so if the driver can work it in, you are at least able to request a subscription, meaning get picked up at the same time every day, or maybe the same time every Tuesday or something like that. So, I don't know if there are any subscriptions on this particular service, but that is an option that an individual could work out, yes.
Your Honor?
Alderman Brown?
One last comment. Like I said, I think it's a great program, so I want to make sure everybody can take advantage of it that can. About a year ago, you were out of town, so I had to go out to the Heritage Woods complex one day for their anniversary celebration, and I had the pleasure of meeting a couple ladies that run the Bethany Elderly Daycare. I can't remember their names, but I'm sure you know who I'm talking about. And they were telling me that one of the issues that they see is that an awful lot of the elderly people that would like to be able to come over there for the day don't have the ability to do that, because they can't drive, don't drive, whatever the case is, and we're looking for some other type of means of transportation. So, I hope that we're reaching out to them to let them know about this, that they can at least then let those elderly people know about this opportunity.
And Alderman, a chance?
I was actually going to ask, can we get more of these? I need to make a stop at the Homestead. I'd like to visit there every six months or so to give a talk. I would love to drop some collateral off for you.
Yes. I'd be happy to send a bunch of those to you.
Alderman Callahan?
Where does the other funding come from this? Is it all Pace?
Yeah. Pace, in fact, this one is 100% funded by Pace. It's not subsidized by any local government partner. Pace is funded, as you may know, by a local sales tax that funds the RTA system, so that's how Pace gets its operating funds.
Thank you for the question. Let me get on my high horse here for a second. Pace and Metro and the CTA are all funded by the RTA sales tax. And as most of you know, we've just been through some significant challenges to that whole idea that went to the Illinois Supreme Court and were judged to be, where we had businesses in our own community that were taking their sales tax out of Batavia and charging it to locations outside the RTA service tax, so they could totally avoid paying the RTA tax. In other words, a business was going on here, but they were avoiding by where they were charging their sales to. And the Illinois Supreme Court has recently ruled this to be unconstitutional, and they had to stop doing that. But, as Doug just indicated, we are very fortunate. This whole thing is currently being paid for by the Pace's share of the RTA sales tax. And, you know, I will tell you that that is no small amount of money, and that we are very fortunate that we are getting, you know, I think we're starting to get the return on our payments to them, because Batavia does make a significant contribution through the sales tax. The same holds true with the Metro train station. There is a significant per-person ridership every time you get on a Metro train and go to Chicago, that the RTA is subsidizing each and every rider on that train, as they are subsidizing, in our case, 100% of every rider on these buses. And the fares we're charging do not in any way, shape, or form begin to cover the expenses of buying this bus and maintaining it and insuring it and dispatching it and everything else. So, this really is a good example of the value of the RTA, and as you've heard me already speak several times, I'm very excited about some of the other Pace services that will be offered here in another year or two, when we get this shoulder built over on I-90 going out of Elgin, because apparently, we're all going to be able to go out and stand on Randall Road at any one of the bus stops. The bus will pick us up, take us up to a transfer point near Elgin. You'll be able to get off that bus, get on another one, or ride you on the shoulder, and that'll take you right into the site of the old Displanes Towway Oasis, which is now being made into a bus transfer station. And there'll be a CTA bus come out of O'Hare Airport, pick you up and take you down to every one of the terminals in O'Hare, or pick you up at the terminal and take you back to the bus. And you'll be able to commute to O'Hare Airport on a bus from Batavia at a price much, much cheaper than any of the limos or any of the other expenses that you now have to pay if you're going to drive your car in there and park it, and you know, and some of the others who do this traveling, if you have to go to O'Hare and park your car for three or four days or take a limo in there, that's pretty expensive to do that. This is going to be, you're going to have to wait at a bus stop and carry your own luggage, but it's going to be, I think, a lot cheaper and more, in many respects, easier for a lot of people to do than some of the current ways you get to O'Hare Airport. So, I'm really excited about that. We've got to get I-90 shoulders built before we can kick that in, but that's in the process, and that should be completed. Are seventeen, is there a date on that?
Right. The I-90 is supposed to open, yes, in 2017.
So, that would be something that, we've got two or three bus stops on Randall Road that somebody can just take you out there and stand with your luggage, and away you go. And hopefully bring you back, drop you off there, too, so.
How else are you spreading the word?
Well, we have outreach to businesses that we're doing now locally here in Batavia. We also promote this, you know, through social media, through our website, through this email alert system that we have, where we can kind of geo-target people who, you know, who live in the area. So, there's certainly never, we can never do enough outreach to get the word out, but that's the mechanisms we're using now.
Make a nice article for the Chronicle?
Indeed. I'll make sure to give him a brochure.
PSA on VATV.
Well, thank you, Doug.
Thanks, everyone.
See you tomorrow night with a different hat on. Okay, the next item, number eight, I'm very honored tonight to be able to introduce our newly-elected representative to the Illinois General Assembly that represents the north end of Batavia, and I guess on the west side of town, and that's Steve Anderson. So, Representative Anderson, welcome, and Mike is your...
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Members of the City Council, staff, and of course, the public. It's an honor to be here tonight, to introduce myself to you, tell you a little bit about me and what the future holds. Really, tonight is just an opportunity to begin the dialogue, I hope. The idea in my mind is that communication is the key. So, for me to come here tonight is just the beginning. I hope that you, at the same time, will always feel free to communicate back to me, to tell me your concerns, and most importantly, the concerns of your constituents going forward, so that we have good communication. That's the success or failure, I think, of my office and yours, quite frankly, so that we make sure that we're doing things right for our citizens. As the mayor pointed out, my district, actually, the southernmost point of my district is the Depot Museum. So, I kind of picture that as kind of the Key West of the 65th District, you know, have one of those little points there. From there, it runs north and west, all the way up through Geneva, Batavia, Geneva, St. Charles, South Elgin, Huntley, Hampshire, Pingry Grove, a little bit of Gilberts, a little bit of Campton, and even a house in Wayne, believe it or not. So, you can picture kind of the gerrymandered nature of that. But it's about 108,000 people that I have the honor to represent in those various communities. So, just to give you a little bit of background for those of you who do not know me, on who I am and what I hope to accomplish, I've been a resident of Geneva for about 22 years. Raised, my wife and I raised our children in Geneva, and I suspect it might be similar in Batavia, but being a resident for 22 years means I'm a newcomer. Most people view, if you're not multi-generational, you really haven't been around that long. So, I'm kind of a newcomer. I'm a local attorney. I practice municipal law, so I work with Roman and his firm from time to time, doing the same thing that he does. And that's always been an honor for me to be able to represent our local communities, and in fact, I represent the Metro West Council of Government, which you are a proud charter member of. So, thank you for that. I also served on the Geneva Library Board for approximately five years before undertaking this new opportunity to serve in a different capacity. So, Doug and I share some similar interests there, and it was with great pleasure that I served the library board. Now, a major focus of my energies, and I really believe the energies of most of the General Assembly at the state level, is going to have to be in righting our ship. It is all about the budget this session. I'm sure there will be other things that will come up, but that will be my focus, will be to right that ship and to do really more of what you do, which is to spend within your means, to not spend more than you receive. Unfortunately, the state of Illinois does the exact opposite, or has until very recently. It exceeds its income by its expenditures by about $4 billion a year over the last 20 years. I don't know how we have sustained it as long as we have, but we are at a tipping point, ladies and gentlemen. So, you can rest assured, in my mind, that will be our laser focus. And I'm confident that we have a governor who shares that viewpoint and has said so. Having said that, be aware, that means that we are all going to share the pain. You cannot say that we are going to cut revenues and spend within our means without looking at cuts, cuts even to good programs. I suspect we're going to root out the waste, broad, and abuse, but at the same time, that's not going to be enough. We're all going to have to make hard choices as we go forward. And we'll learn more about that, actually, Wednesday. The governor will give his budget address, and I encourage you to listen to that if you have the opportunity, because I think we'll see a real shakeup in the world of Springfield. It's going to be painful for all of us. One thing that he promised at his State of the State address last week, two weeks ago, was that, he said that, "No one will like everything in my plan," and I am sure that is true. I had the opportunity to have breakfast with the governor about three weeks ago, myself and three other legislators, so a very small group. And I was given the opportunity, as we all were, to speak about one thing that was of concern to us. The thing that I raised was, I was not sure of his experience with LGDF, the Local Government Distributive Fund. And I wanted to make sure he understood the history of LGDF, that it in fact was a compromised deal struck many years ago in lieu of a personal income tax at the local level, that instead of each individual community having an income tax, which would be somewhat unworkable, but does exist in other states, we wouldn't do that. We'd have a unified plan. And so, that money is not the state's money, it is in fact your money. And so, my urging to him was that he resist calls to touch the LGDF or touch it more than it's already been touched. I cannot guarantee you that I have been successful, but I do believe that he at least heard the history of it, understood it. And the other point that I made to him was, I said, "Governor, quite frankly, if the state of Illinois shut down tomorrow, most people would not notice for a little while. They would notice eventually, but for a little while, they would not. If the city of Batavia," I did use you as an example, "if the city of Batavia, however, shut down tomorrow, we would all notice immediately. When they go to turn on the water faucet and no water comes out, when the snowplows don't come pie, and when you try to flush your toilets, or call the police, when those things don't happen, you'll notice immediately." I think it resonated with him. Again, I don't know that it will be the ultimate success, but understand, I am fighting for you, and I'm fighting for the local issues that concern all of us. And then the last item, as to kind of my perspective, is I am all about local control. Being a municipal attorney all these years, my view is that what you do is, quite frankly, quite a bit more important and more direct to the citizens than what we do at the state level. So, I will continue to be an advocate for local control and to minimize or eliminate, if possible, those unfunded mandates that you are required to provide, even though we're the ones telling you to do it, not giving you any money with which to do it. So, that's a little bit about my goals. Second thing I want to talk about is my outreach for the future. Three things. One is, we are opening our office. It'll be in Geneva at 127 South First Street. It'll be open as of Wednesday, and please feel free to come by any time. I'm proud to say that it is the newest acquisition by Batavia Enterprises, so there's a good Batavia connection there for my landlord. Number two, we'll be setting up citizen advocacy groups, in other words, groups with special interests, veterans, seniors, business client, climate enhancement committees, so that we can get direct feedback. And I encourage you and your residents, if they're interested, to be a part of that within my organization. And then third, with your permission, I hope to have the opportunity to have mobile office hours here at your city hall, so that the people of Batavia don't have to go to Geneva or anywhere else. They can come here if they want to take some time and explain to me their concerns, and I will be here to listen, assuming you permit it, so. And then last, of course, is I am happy to answer any questions you might have, to the extent that I can, and if I can't, I'll find the answers for you and get back to you. With that, thank you.
We have any questions for Alderman Callahan?
Yes, speaking of municipalities, what committees are you on?
I am on cities and villages. That was my number-one choice. We were allowed to rank our choices, and I wrote that one down, 11111, because that's the one I wanted the most. Quite frankly, that is my skill set, so I hope to bring that to Springfield. Number two, I'm on the Appropriations Committee for General Services. General Services covers everything that isn't higher education, education, human services, and transportation, I believe. So, it's a wide-ranging area. I also cover the Transportation Committee, so when we're talking about roads and bridges and those physical improvements and IDOT's work, I'll have significant input there. Museums and cultural expositions is another one. I have seven, all told, and I'm just learning them, so forgive me if I don't list them all. But I would say that those, the first couple are the major ones.
I just want to say thank you for your comments on the LGDF. That money belongs to the residents of our city, and that is a direct connection to the quality of life for the residents in our city. So, I think every one of us needs to fight for that, as I hope we continue that.
Indeed, I agree. Springfield, like many municipal entities, has its own acronyms, its own set of acronyms. And one of the acronyms relates to what they call "transfers out" of the general fund budget. They call them "transfers out" or "trouts." They're trouts. And they think that LGDF is a trout. In my opinion, it is not. It is exactly what you described. It is your money and your citizens' money, most importantly. Thank you.
Will you still be able to help out Metro West?
Yes, I will continue to be involved. It may change or morph a little bit, but absolutely, you know, I believe that our interests coincide.
And then Lucy and I wanted to know, are you still giving tours of the governor's mansion?
Whenever possible, but there is a new resident there, so he has a little something to say about it.
Thanks. Looking forward to seeing you when we drive down.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Representative Anderson called me and asked for permission to come down and speak. He said he wanted to have a picture from Batavia that he could hang in his office, and I guess every town that you represent's going to try to have something there.
I'm asking for that.
That's the intention.
Yes.
So, I'm very honored tonight to be able to be able to introduce the new president So I'm very honored tonight to present to him a picture that was taken in Batavia in 1994. And this is right out here on the other side of the building, on the banks of the Fox River. And in the winter of that year, for some reason, we had every bird in Kane County nested here in Batavia. And the naturalists in the region estimated that someplace in December of that year, for about a three-week period, we had between 4,000 and 5,000 birds on the waters of the Fox River. And because the Fox River is kind of in your corner of Batavia, that's in your district, and there are some issues, be it the dam or riverfront improvement, which is what this council's all about, I thought it was good to give you a daily reminder of what Batavia is interested in, specifically in your district.
Wonderful.
And we're captioning it as "Batavia, Home of Mother Nature."
That's beautiful.
So on behalf of the people of Batavia, it's my honor to present that to you.
Thank you very much, and this will hang proudly, as the mayor said, in my office in Springfield. So I do hope that you come down, so that you can see that it's there, hung prominently for everybody to see. So thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And thank you all for your time. I appreciate it.
All right, the next thing is Main Street. Mr. Madder, are you here tonight to represent?
I'm here. Stuck with me tonight. How's everybody doing? Great? So, yeah, Jeff Madder, board member, Batavia Main Street. I'm here to present the Main Street Minute. So, 78 Main Street volunteers donated 145 hours of planning, meetings, programs, and events in January. As part of our ongoing retention meetings, Main Street met with two new businesses last month to learn about them and how we, as an organization, can help them grow. So we're at a big event on Thursday, February 12th. We just started, we started doing this, I don't know if it, last year was the first year, I don't know, yeah, I think so. I'm looking at Jamie, because she's a board member as well. But we want to recognize those that are doing, they're creating, they're shining, they're glowing, any other adjective you want to use about a downtown business. They're creating a buzz downtown, and that's what we love about being that organization that is doing that. So, we have several that won, and I'll briefly go through them. So for the best-dressed window, that went to Batavia Academy of Dance. The most attractive interior was Shine Yoga and Urban Style Salon and Spa. The front door award went to Acosta's Consignment. Best new neighbor is Fallen Star Tattoo. Rookie of the Year, we have Beards Guard Barbers. Most Improved Building, Gaetano's Batavia. Most Accomplished Committee, Downtown Dance and Tri-City Swing. Outstanding Sponsor is the Boy Scouts Troop Six. Outstanding Individual Volunteers was Carol Burnham and Andy Christopoulos, Sharon Harwick and Anna Sheldon. So aren't those four people, I'm sure if you know them, you know how much work they put into Batavia Main Street, and we're so happy that they are doing that. And then we have the Main Street Windmill Award, and this is our Volunteer of the Year, and that goes to Lou Teis. So congratulations to all of our 2014 Celebrate Success Award winners. Looking ahead, we have our Economic Development Committee is hard at work with two upcoming events. Thursday, February 26th, at 2:30 PM, the city of Batavia and Batavia Main Street will host the 2015 Brokers Super Bowl and Virtual Property Tour at Funway Entertainment Center. Participating attendees are providing PowerPoint slides for a virtual tour of spaces they represent, followed by games of seven-pin, no-tap bowling. Must, I've never done that, anybody? Seven-pin, no-tap? No idea what that is, but I'm sure it's going to be a lot of fun. Save the date for 2015 Restaurant Madness from Monday, March 23rd through Friday, March 27th. Participating restaurants will offer 25% off, a minimum of $20 per table bill when dining in. Look for your card in the mail and try someplace or something new. On Friday, March 13th, from 7:00 to 11:00 PM, Batavia Main Street has partnered with Batavia Foundation for Educational Excellence on their Casino and Bowling Night inside Funway. The event raises funds for the foundation's grant and scholarship programs. All are invited to attend. Tickets are only $40 in advance and $50 at the door. Now, with advance tickets, they include an extra $25 in gambling chips, so get your tickets early, folks. Admission includes bowling shoes, $100 gambling chips, appetizers, raffle, and more. If this all sounds exciting, or you'd like to learn more about what Batavia Main Street does, please contact us at our Main Street office at (630) 761-3528, or you can always visit us on the web at downtownbatavia.com. Questions? Great! Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Moving then to item number 10, which is Proclamation for National Engineers Week, February 22nd to 28th, and I was wondering where that was going to be. Want to give that to Alderman Wolf, so he can read it?
Sure. Can you do that? Okay, we have proclamation. Whereas engineering services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of engineering and programs such as streets, water, wastewater, stormwater, and development, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of engineering officials, and whereas efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff the engineering department is materially influenced by the people's attitudes and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor of the City of Batavia, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the week of February 22nd through 28th, 2015, as National Engineers Week. In the City of Batavia, and I call upon the citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our engineers and to recognize the contributions which engineering officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. I move that we accept this proclamation as read.
Second. Move by Alderman Wolf, Second Alderman Chansett, for the approval of the proclamation for National Engineers Week. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Motion's approved. 12 yes, no-no's, one absent, or one vacant and one absent, okay. Andrea's here, and let Alan go up and represent to you the proclamation. Andrea brought it down, but I'd already signed it, so I was optimistic we'd get it approved by the city council. So thank you, engineers, for all you do to keep us on the straight and narrow here.
Well, thank you, and as in years past, we'll have this displayed on the counter for the week, and we'll have a table out here at City Hall with some information on engineering. We have a lot more towards civil. We're going to be working to adding an electrical as well, maybe more so next year, but definitely we'll try and get some information, but it'll be available.
Okay, very good. Okay, moving then to item number 11, which is Ordinance 15-07, Accepting the 2015 Prevailing Wage. Who's got that one?
Governor, Mr.?
I think so.
Alderman Stark, you have that?
Yes, I do. I was just assuming it was Alan.
No, I just vote against it.
That's right, I do remember that. Every year, we discuss the prevailing wage, and we approved, we recommended to council Ordinance Number 1507, Accepting the 2015 Prevailing Wage, at the Cow meeting on 2/315. And Andrea, do you have anything you'd like to explain about it, or does anyone have any questions of Andrea? It came from her.
As Susan said, every year we have to pass this act, and so it's kind of a standard ongoing thing. And for the last few years, we've had unemployment greater than 5%, so there's additional statutes that require that we have to make sure that there are Illinois employees in place on those jobs. But it's something that we do need to pass, and all the work that's done has to follow these rates.
Thank you. So I move that we pass Ordinance Number 1507, Accepting the 2015 Prevailing Wage.
Second. Move by Alderman Stark, Second Alderman Chansett, for the approval of Ordinance 15-07, Accepting the 2015 Prevailing Wage Act. Any discussion? Alderman Callahan?
Just real quick, the, this is one that we have to pass, but I guess, what is the implications if we didn't pass it?
It would affect our state and federal money. I know that, that's why.
It would, you know, like, things like the Deer Path Road Bridge that we're hopefully going to be pushing forth here, we'd run into some major bureaucratic obstacles, I would call it that, because we're not saying that we're going to pay prevailing wage. That would be very problematic. And we got the Main Street program that's coming up this year, and I've had several opportunities in the last few weeks to talk with the folks at CMAP, which represents the funding controls over those two particular projects, and everything seems to be moving right along. So I wouldn't want to have any monkey wrenches thrown into the works here and have somebody, the feds come in and say, "We're going to stop this money for the moment till Batavia passes a prevailing wage act." So this is one of those things, it's the bitter pill, you know. Anybody else?
I don't know if it's a bitter pill, you know, not to be confrontational, but it's a livable wage that we're allowing people, you know, we're allowing them health insurance and a livable wage, so the working man can take a vacation once a year or help put his child to college. So I think I have no issues with this prevailing wage. So, I mean, it costs money to do things, and so it establishes a cost, establishes a rate of pay, and I guess the unions have done that historically, but everyone in this room has benefited from that, establishing, you know, a salesman who's ever, you don't have to have any union background, but I guess, you know, the salaries that we have today have been established by unions, and so I have no issues with this at all, so I would always vote in your favor of it.
I would just echo what Alderman O'Brien has just said, and for whatever reason, there has been a couple of occasions over the years that I've sat here where, I don't know, I sometimes think it was a planned, staged moment of entertainment on the part of the city council, but it went seven to seven, so they would allow me to do the annual vote, so what the effect, I've always voted for it. And I understand what you're saying, you know, and I talk about the bitter pill. I think there is this angst that's out there that, you know, here comes the government, and here's one more thing they're telling you you're going to do. And, you know, some of the more conservative voices in the community, I think, have some reservations about, you know, the government constantly handing you off rules and regulations that end up costing the taxpayers more money. And, I mean, there's a variety of them right now that we're knee-deep in here, on a variety of fronts, where we get mandates from the state or the feds, and the EPA seems to be loaded with them. So there is, there's a lot of this out there, but this is one that, given what we have already put in, you know, I'm sensitive to the projects that we have currently out here pending, specifically coming at us from the federal and state level, because, you know, we got to have this in place for us to be eligible to get that money, and we've put a lot of sweat equity to get that Deer Path Road Bridge built and that Main Street project on the front burners to get it funded. So I hate to see us lose that, and that would just be my two cents on it. Anybody else? Alderman Wolf?
I guess I'll just explain, the reason why I consistently vote against this is, I don't like the fact that we're being forced by the state basically to spend more money for the exact same job that we may be paying one of our employees to do, and yet we go out to contract it for a job that the state's helping to pay for, and we have to pay a higher rate for that. That's the reason why I don't like this. I just hope that our new governor can convince somebody else to change it. It's an archaic act that's been basically revised and put into effect back in 1941, and I don't think it applies today. And I think the thing that we're supposed to do is try to get the best bang for the buck that we have from the taxpayers' money, and this is something that goes against that.
Anybody else? Kirk, call the roll.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
No.
Wolf?
No.
Fisher?
No.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
No.
Homan?
No.
Sam?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
That one, Resolution 15-26-R, is approved.
12 yes, no-no's, one absent, and one vacant. So that's approved. All right, we, for some reason, we left off on the agenda, the other business label that we always have here. Is anybody on the council having other business you want to state here at the moment?
It's not on the agenda.
Neither is the mayor's.
Neither is the mayor's report, neither is the city administrator's report. Yikes.
Mr. McGrath, you want to chit-chat for a moment?
We can bend the rules.
Sure. Alderman Clark asked me to say hello to everybody. She's, as you know, she's recuperating from her surgery and is doing very well, doing some therapy, and will be back soon. I've been meeting with Scott Buning. We're preparing some materials for you for a discussion of some possible changes to our development processes, particularly as they pertain to public notice and public participation. This arises out of the industrial proposition out on Kirk Road. Hopefully, this will be before you on February 24th or March 3rd. We've reached tentative agreements with our street employees bargaining unit, our police patrol unit, and our police sergeants unit, and we'll bring those tentative agreements forward, hopefully, at the next Cow. We had a very good meeting today with the owners and operators of the Open Range. As you know, we had budgeted some funds as part of the Houston Street project to redo our retaining wall and hopefully move that retaining wall to make that corner safer. In working with the Open Range, we think that we'll be able to get an easement from them and work with some grading, so we'll be able to totally eliminate that retaining wall and save some money, and at the same time, work out a partnership with them. So it's not going to slow up our design work for the Houston Street project at all. The staff will be working with their architect, Steve Vassillion, and Chris will be working on them on, you know, the other terms of a possible public-private partnership. They're looking at putting in a really nice brick patio with an outdoor fireplace, a bags court. It'll be very nice, it'll be a great addition for that intersection.
Aye.
That one, Resolution 15-26-R, is approved, 12 yes, no-no's, 1 absent, and 1 vacant. So, that's approved. All right, we, for some reason, we left off on the agenda, the other business label that we always have here. Is anybody on the council having other business you want to state here at the moment?
It's not on the agenda.
Neither is the mayor's report.
Neither is the city administrator's report. Yikes.
Mr. McGrath, you want to chit-chat for a moment?
We can bend the rules.
Sure. Alderman Clark asked me to say hello to everybody. She's, as you know, she's recuperating from her surgery and is doing very well, doing some therapy, and will be back soon. I've been meeting with Scott Buning. We're preparing some materials for you for a discussion of some possible changes to our development processes, particularly as they pertain to public notice and public participation. This rises out of the industrial proposition out on Kirk Road. Hopefully, this will be before you on February 24 or March 3. We've reached tentative agreements with our street employees bargaining unit, our police patrol unit, and our police sergeants unit, and we'll bring those tentative agreements forward, hopefully, at the next cow. We had a very good meeting today with the owners and operators of the open range. As you know, we had budgeted some funds as part of the Houston Street project to redo our retaining wall, and hopefully move that retaining wall to make that corner safer. In working with the open range, we think that we'll be able to get an easement from them and work with some grading, so we'll be able to totally eliminate that retaining wall and save some money, and at the same time, work out a partnership with them. So, it's not going to slow up our design work for the Houston Street project at all. The staff will be working with their architect, Steve Vassillion, and Chris will be working on them on, you know, the other terms of a possible public-private partnership. They're looking at putting in a really nice brick patio with an outdoor fireplace, a bags court. It'll be very nice, it'll be a great addition for that intersection. Wednesday night, Mayor Burns of Geneva is hosting a meeting of the Fox River communities that are members of Metro West to discuss a, kind of a partnership among the river communities relating to us all working together on the safety, the health, and use of the Fox River for economic development purposes, and you're all invited to that if you'd like to attend. I can get you some details. I believe it's at like 5:30 on Wednesday evening. We don't exactly know what the outcome of this is going to be. Certainly, you know, rivers is a very local issue, but we think maybe we can work together to make it a real, even more of a tourist attraction. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Any questions, Mr. McGrath, this evening?
Is that this Wednesday?
Yes.
I'll send, it's at the City of Geneva, and I'll send something out on it, it's at the city council chambers. Pizza provided. Yes, sir.
Just along the lines of that, would that be a public meeting, and would we have quorum issues if we needed to go?
Not if you're not discussing city of Batavia business as a group. I think it's gonna be more informational, there's going to be somebody from IDNR talking about what their plans are for river usage.
That's why I was wondering if it was talking about...
Well, I don't think it's gonna be talking about city, individual city businesses, I think we'll keep away from that.
And they've got kind of a grand plan for the entire stretch of the Fox River through Kane County that I think that what they're trying to begin to have some conversation about, with the new governor, I'm interested to see if changes in the IDNR, which I know there have been some, what the current take on that is, 'cause I only heard the last version from the last administration, and I'm not sure what the new administration's gonna tell, because there's been a major shift in that department down there, so I'm not sure what they're gonna tell us, but.
That's all.
Okay, I'll skip the mayor's report because it's not on the agenda, but I do have a couple of announcements. One is, is that on February 24, Metro West is gonna have its annual legislative breakfast down at the Gaslight in, on Church Road in Aurora at 7:30 in the morning, and any of you who can come, I would really appreciate you coming down there. I think it's a, it's a very intensified opportunity to have some dialogue with our state representatives who represent the Metro West area, which is Kane, DeKalb, and Kendall Counties. So, it's more than just the local people that involve Batavia, Geneva, and St. Charles, it's, Aurora has a whole different group of representatives and senators, same with DeKalb County, and some also degree in Kendall County. So, it is a pretty good-sized group of folks, and there are some pretty hot-button, you know, state issues right now, and I think the more the mayor there, that we can show that we're there, so I know I'll be going. Bill, you're going, aren't you?
Yes, sir.
So, if any of the, the two of us will be there, so if any of you can, the morning of the 24th, 7:30 down at the Gaslight on Church Road in Aurora, 7:30. And let us know, 'cause we need to make a reservation for you, if you can make it. If you can't, I understand, but they, last year, they had this at night, and this year, they ran into major problems with several other city councils that are members, having their regular meetings that night, and, you know, we have the J-Cow that night, so there was a whole bunch of folks that had conflicts going with the night meeting on the 24th, so they moved it to the breakfast time. The other thing I wanted to just make an announcement about is, is that I sent you all copies of the two resumes, we received letters of intent from Mr. Bodderman and Mr. Foster, who are the applicants for the vacancy in the 5th Ward due to Steve Vassillion's resignation, and we had originally talked about doing the interviews of those, because all the members on the city council, as is our policy of replacement here, will have a vote on who that, which one of these two is selected. Originally, we're gonna do this on the 17th, and I think you saw this in the memo, we're gonna move that back to the 24th, and I have talked now personally with, I just talked to Mr. Bodderman, but Mr. Foster called me earlier today. Both of them are fine with moving it back. The problem, we have a couple of things. Tomorrow night's meeting really has gotten quite an agenda to it, and so I'd hate to try to squeeze that in, 'cause I think it's a pretty important thing, and we need to have a responsible dialogue with that. The other problem is, is that it looks like whichever night we pick, somebody's gonna be absent. That's kind of the word I'm kind of getting. So, what I'd like to do, if any of you know that you're not gonna be able to make it on the 24th, if you would let me know, and then what I'd like to do is give you the telephone numbers of both Mr. Foster and Mr. Bodderman, and I'd like to ask you that you call both of them and talk to them for a few minutes, and then, you know, we're gonna ask you to submit to the city clerk in a sealed envelope your vote on which person, so we got everybody on the council voting on this. Even if you can't be there, I'd like to have you submit a vote on who can be there. Now, if, as you can see, if we were to do it tomorrow night, I think there's at least one, if not two of you, that are gonna be absent, so there's no good night to do this, but if you can't make next Tuesday night, let me know, so I can give you their phone numbers, and you can call and talk to them, and then I'd like to have you submit a vote, which Heidi will have, and when we open the votes up, it'll be an easy one to calculate, 'cause either you're for one or the other, so we'll be able to, should be able to pretty easily tell who's gonna be. It's not like we have four or five applicants here, so, and they're both seemingly agreeable, both Mr. Bodderman and Mr. Foster were agreeable to entertain in your phone calls if you want to call them directly. So, that's what I'd like to ask that you do, 'cause this is important, and I'm very pleased, I think we have two very highly qualified candidates, we're a winner in either one of them, and it's just a matter of making the difficult decision of which good person do you pick, so it's a nice situation to be in, as I think we were the last time we did this, when Alderman Fisher was selected. We had another group of good candidates that night, so it's been a real nice process for us to go to, and I really like the idea that all of you make the decision, because that person, when they come on, is gonna be working with all of you, and they come on here knowing that they were selected by the council, and it wasn't some, the mayor telling you, "This is who I want to appoint," type of a thing, which is done in other places. So, I really feel this is about as democratic as we can get it, given the circumstances and how we have to make the decision, kind of after the election time had passed and all this other good stuff, so. Anyway, that's what I'd like to announce to you, so. Alderman Brown, I'd entertain a motion for adjournment.
We need to announce meetings, Your Honor.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, so tomorrow night, we're gonna have a Committee of a Whole meeting at 7, I'm sorry, 6:30 tomorrow night, that's how we remember, 6:30. We do have quite a few items on our agenda, as the mayor's just recognized. We've got the acceptance of a quick claim deed for parcel number one in the Stonefield Unit 1 subdivision. We also have approving of the final plat of P2 Estate subdivision on Hickory Lane at Rosewood Lane in unincorporated Batavia Township. We have another ordinance, which is authorization for execution of a quick claim deed for the land behind 122 West Wilson Street. Another ordinance for authorization of execution of a warranted deed of land at 130 West Wilson Street. Another ordinance, 15-10, for amending the text of the zoning code. And lastly, or not lastly, but next, we're gonna have some discussion on the West Town Tiff District Report. Chris Aiston is gonna present that. And then, of course, we're gonna have discussion on Streetscape, if there is anything to discuss there, and then we'll have closed session for land acquisition, and there's a couple other items that may or may not be on at that time, which is setting the price for sale of land and purchase and sale of electric power. I don't think, Bill, are we gonna have anything on electric power? Nothing on electric power tomorrow night. And the library is gonna be here tomorrow night at roughly 7:30, and that's something that the mayor's been working to try to get the council and all the other taxing bodies together at different times, where we can all kind of have a chat and talk about things that we feel are important to talk about. I think tomorrow night, Mayor, you had mentioned that the library was gonna be interested in talking to us about the project that they're gonna be doing, and, you know, maintenance and some other landscaping, and reconfiguration of stairs and such on their property, and the possibility of a Tiff sharing on that. So, that'll be tomorrow night at roughly 7:30. And then we also, the Plan Commission has been canceled for Wednesday, February 18, and Historic Preservation is scheduled for Wednesday, February 23 at 5:30, that's a Monday. That's all I have.
And kind of tagging along on this meeting announcement thing, the other thing I'd like to, is we've already indicated at some point in time, probably after the April election, I'm gonna give you a date with the facilitator to have like a council retreat, which we'll do in an evening time period, and one night, that's agreeable to the council. The other thing I'd like to, I'm attempting to talk to both the Park District and the school board, and when we get the new school board seated, and we get the new city council seated, I want to have another one of these meetings with the school board specifically, and let them come in, and everybody get to know who everybody is, type of a thing, and then have some dialogue with them on, you know, issues that are of commonality between the city and the school district, and just kind of everybody know what we're all thinking one way or another. So, we're trying to put some stronger communications together within the interior of the community of Batavia between governmental bodies, is my intention here, and the only way you do that. I think tomorrow night's meeting with the library board could be very beneficial, they, I'm detecting, at least I feel, they're coming down here with the right spirit in mind, and they're really wanting to do some stuff to kind of jump in on the bandwagon of nice things for downtown, and making the library a further higher contributor than what it already is. In my opinion, it's pretty good already to help bolster the downtown area. So, they've got some interesting ideas they want to talk to us about, and so I'm pleased by what I'm hearing, so. Anyway, look forward to the dialogues in the near future.
Lastly, I will not be in attendance at next Tuesday night's meeting. I've already talked to Alderman Wolf, and he's gonna handle that meeting in my absence and Alderman Clark's absence, so you would be the next senior Alderman, so Alderman Wolf will handle that meeting, and so I will be needing to get those phone numbers from you.
So, you want to entertain a motion now for adjournment? Do you want to go to the next committee meetings?
Yeah, we have more committees.
Oh, I'm sorry, we didn't get that on the agenda either.
It's not on the agenda. I just read the agenda. Government Services has nothing tomorrow evening, and on the 24th, we will be interviewing the 5th Ward applicants. We have a public meeting brochure discussion and collective bargaining agreements, and then looking way down the line, on March 31st, we'll be discussing the strategic plan, which is of interest to many people, but so, just so you can get on your calendars early. That's all I have.
Nothing for public utilities?
Nothing on city services.